I just think.
Perfect. All right, welcome to our city council meeting for tonight, January 23rd, 2019. We will begin with an invocation by Pat B., the senior warden for St. Jude's Episcopal Church, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Hartley.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city, Cedar City, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty, let us believe in truth, flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now move on to our agenda order approval. Are there any items the council would like changed from the consent agenda? Or the published agenda is not going to get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move to council business.
Mayor, I only have one thing that I'd like to bring up. I'm wondering if Chief Adams, I'm sorry, this is going to probably fall on your department, but I don't need a new or used mattress, and I'm sure if I do, I'm going to go to a store to buy it. I'm sure you've noticed all of the signs around town, yellow placards that look like they're hand-printed, but they're really printed. I have a collection at my home that I'm happy to share with you, but if we could see what we could do about, they're scattered all over town, and I know they're not legal. So, anyway.
I wondered who took down my signs.
It was me, Tom. Thank you.
All right, are there other?
I have a couple of questions on the bills.
Okay, perfect.
So, just Corolo engineers, we paid them, so $23,000 twice, is that? So was that, is this listed as the same thing? I just wondered, were those just installments with half-down balance? Or, Jason, I'm sorry, Jason, I-
Sure, I think Jonathan paid bills, I'm not sure how that worked.
Okay, I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember what the price for that as fluent study was, but I just had a question on that. Then, I had some concerns as reading through the bills about Executec's billing. We, in June, it'll be three years that we've hired them to do our IT services for our city. And I just was, I don't know, I was looking through these bills, there's some, and I talked to Rean about this, and there's, I mean, there's just a lot of different, there's some overcharge, there's an overcharge consultant for 125, overcharge for this, credit, there's an over, over, overage, there's a double bill charge, double bill charge, double billed credit, double billed credit, consulting overcharge, consulting overcharge. It just seems like there's a lot of, and I talked to Rean about this, and I guess there was some problems with billing, I guess they had billed, wanted to go back over a year to say we hadn't paid some bills over a year ago, and now they're asking to pay them. It just seems like the bookkeeping on this account is, has got some problems or some issues.
They approached us in approximately, I want to say September, October, and told us there was some issues they had with some of the billings. They brought in what they believed they were owed, we reviewed them. Our purpose in reviewing them was to see, one, if we actually got the product or the service. So we went to the departments and checked that. And then, two, if we paid the bill, we didn't want to pay twice, but if we hadn't paid for the product or service, we wanted to make it right. We've had some long discussions with them about their billing practices, about how they're our only vendor out of the hundreds of vendors that we have that seems to run into this problem. They're sending down two representatives sometime early next week, I'm not quite sure when. We think we've got the problem fixed, at least we hope we do, from our perspective.
So do you think that within we owe these charges that have been submitted, as he's indicating?
Pardon me, I didn't hear the question.
Do you believe we do then all the charges that are laid out here based on?
Yeah, so that was the, that was our exercise to go through in-house. If we actually got the product or the service, and we hadn't paid for it, we didn't have a record of paying for it, then we owed for the product or the service.
Right.
And we wanted to make that right, but some of the things they were sending us were very confusing, and we had to work through that, those individual bills with them to get clarification on exactly what they were billing us for. It's been a problem for Rean and myself for probably the last three months. So we've tried to, we've tried, we think we're square now.
Okay. I mean, when we, when we debated this years ago, you know, Mountain West, I think Mountain West and Executec were kind of the final, I know there's other computer vendors in Cedar City, don't want to leave them out, but I think, just if memory serves me correct, Executec bid it for like $78,000, and it was kind of the understanding back then, maybe not a written rule, but an understanding that we would still, as a city, support our local vendors when we had by computers and those things. And I've looked at the numbers, and it just doesn't seem like we're maybe supporting our local people as much as we should. I mean, we paid, we paid Executec in 2017, $112,000, and I know there was some equipment and software things on top of what they quoted for service, the $78,000. But then in 2018, we paid them $140,000. And then, but then I looked at the register of Mountain West, just came to mind on all those others, but I'd looked at that, and it just doesn't seem like we're supporting our local people as much maybe as we should, and I think we need to look at that. I think we need to put this out to bid, it's almost been three years. I think we need to put it out to bid and let our local people have a shot at this again.
Are there any other comments, questions from council? Okay, remember, we don't have a meeting next week. It's directed towards you as well. Okay, we will move on to staff comments, if there are any. Seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda with the public comments. If you're here regarding an agenda item, please wait till we get to that. If you're here for anything else you would like to address with the council. All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the public part with-
Got a comment here.
Oh, well, okay, I didn't see you, I was looking around. Will you come up to the microphone and state your name as well?
I didn't know whether this is the time to address, and I wanted to address the ordinance on the Airbnb stuff, so is this the time, or do I sit down and wait? Or are you just tired of hearing about it?
We will get to that point when we get to that agenda item.
Okay, so I'm going to sit down, that's why I raised my hand. My name is Chris Dolan, and so I'll have a turn a little later.
We'll, we'll see kind of how the council part goes with their debate and discussion amongst themselves, kind of how, if we get to the public comment portion.
Okay.
Because they've had public comments-
I know, I know, I know.
Like a number of times.
I'm tired of reading it all too, so.
And so.
But I'm not finished saying anything, so I haven't even started. I mean, I want, I don't want to take up any time, I just wanted to have my little one or two minutes, so.
Great, thank you. Okay. So, we will now move on, and let, how different.
Good evening, Tom Jett.
What's your name, I'm proud.
I'm right on the spot, I'm learning. The, the, the weatherman last week projected that we were going to get one to three inches of snow, and as if anybody was around on, on Monday, they would know that we got substantially more than one to three inches of snow. And as usual, our city was on it, clear, concise, didn't become overburdened and think the sky was falling, as some communities do when the snow falls, and we get a little bit more than we anticipate. So my thoughts to the, to the road department, the guys that put that time in, and, and dealt with the crazy drivers that were on the road, and it was, it was a lot of crazy drivers, I, I was on the road, but I won't mention myself. But in our, our local police officers, they were just going place to place to place every minute, just constant out there in, in the hectic, watching, watching these cars slide and slip, and it was dangerous, it was really, really dangerous. We were fortunate as a community that we had no real serious injuries or more serious than we had. And then one other, back to the road department, the garbage department was there, the refuge, I'm not sure what we call it nowadays, but the garbage collection was there bright and early Tuesday morning, didn't matter with the snow, they didn't, you know, they took care of the public, and as if we never had a, a big snowfall. So I just want you to know it's recognized, I may be one of the only ones that mention it, but be assured, there's, most of us really appreciate it, we just don't say it.
Thank you for bringing it up, that's true.
Is there anyone else? Okay, now we'll move on to the public portion with the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes dated January 2nd and 9th, 2019, ratified bills dated January 14th, 2019, approved vicinity plan for Cedar Edge Phase II PUD, approved bids from Blackburn and Associates in the amount of $369,628.60 for the 2019 streetlight replacement project, and approved city committee assignments. And I'm not reading through all of those because I did last week.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the staff portion. Item number six, consider an ordinance amending the zone from dwelling multiple units, R-3-M, and Highway Service, HS, to mixed use for property located at 237 North 400 West.
Good evening, Arlo Fosson with Go Civil Engineering. I don't know if there's been any other questions on this one. It's a property located just off of 200 North, next to North Elementary. Their owners are just wanting to change the zone to allow them a little more commercial use on this property.
I drove by and saw it, and I didn't see a problem with it.
All right, comments, questions, is there anything you want to add?
The zone change request is in alignment with the city's general plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, now I don't know where to start with my roll call. We'll start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. Sorry, I was signing bills.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, consider an ordinance amending the general land use plan for medium-density residential and business to light manufacturing, and light manufacturing to real estates residential for property located in the vicinity of 231 West, 3000 North.
Good evening, Bob Platt, I think we discussed this last week, this is, nothing's changed from the discussion last week, frankly. It's a general plan change, and then it's on change.
Hi, Bob.
Hello, Paul, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Great.
All right, council have any questions? Do you have anything you want to add?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we'll start with Councilwoman Adams.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, consider an ordinance amending the zone from annex transition to residential estates on property located in the vicinity of 231 West, 3000 North.
Motion to approve.
All right, who wants to motion?
Eric, go ahead, I'll second it.
All right, we'll start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Consider an ordinance amending Chapter 34 by limiting the requirements to operate a taxicab in Cedar City.
John Ward here, how's it going?
Great.
Good.
All right, Tyler.
So this was Mr. Ward's request to change the ordinance to allow those with misdemeanor theft and drug offenses to still be able to get that endorsement from the city to drive a taxicab.
B level, so, mission to be in line, C was okay, but not A.
As I recall, that, was that the only change that we were requesting the ordinance? I remember looking at it and talking about it, but I just want to make sure that I'm refreshed on that.
One other change would allow a temporary permit to be given-
Right.
-to drivers as long as everything is met except for getting that-
Background check.
Background check, which can sometimes take a few weeks. That request itself, staff didn't have an issue with, because that does take some time. And we will do an initial background check just through our ability to access the court system. So if there is, you know, a theft conviction, usually we can catch those. So that'll, we can do that upfront, and that gives us time to get this official background check done later.
So staff is okay with that, that period, doing the background check, but you implied that they weren't so keen on lowering the bar for qualifications to drive?
Yeah, and the one other request was that taxi cabs be required to have a surveillance camera, and staff didn't see the necessity of that.
It was just extra protection, just in case, so.
It's a good idea for insurance reasons, it's a good idea for their liability, but I don't know about government-
About requiring it.
So the theft and drug issue, was that, did that have to be recent, or was that any time on their record?
Well, five years.
Five years.
Five years minimum, of any kind.
As it's written right now.
Now, didn't we have some discussion about capping the number? Or was that just thrown out as an aside in our discussions last week? Capping the number of cabs in town?
Mr. Ward had brought that up, but that wasn't part of the ordinance change.
Okay, well, I think right now, we don't, I mean, I always hear, you know, let the market take care of it, let the market take care of it, I always hear that. So I'm not sure that, while that could be an issue, you know, if a, if a business can't stay in business because there's not enough business, it'll probably self-regulate itself, I think.
No, that's absolutely right.
I mean, we don't know.
Absolutely right.
I'd like to make a comment regarding this, you know, I've thought a lot about this, and I thought back in my business over the years, that people have come in that have made even serious mistakes, felonies, and, and I think at some point we need to give somebody a second chance, and I, I recently hired a person not that long ago that had a felony, and I was really worried about it because of the nature of the thing, and he's turned out to be one of my best employees, and he's so grateful that I gave him a second chance, and he's turned out to be an incredible employee. And so I think we need to really look at, like, I'm sure there's some risks, but I think we need to, you know, err on the side of compassion sometimes to give people a second chance.
And let the business owner make the decision, it should be our, our risk, our ability to give that option versus someone else telling me no. I mean, if I do my job right, then they'll be fine, I think, you know?
Yeah, but your job is more in a public safety-
Right.
-than working in Paul's cabinet shop.
Correct.
So, so there's a little more consideration, because we all agree someone should-
That's true.
-get that second chance.
You look at like a pizza delivery guy goes to your house also, furniture delivery, that could go into your home and deliver stuff, so we're really not even going into their house for you, we're just taking it around town. Granted, there's still public concern in mind there, but other companies do that too without any kind of restrictions, so.
Tyler, what, what do you think as far as like if we just allowed the misdemeanor B and C, but not A? And do you think that that still presents a risk? Or do you think that's something that we could work with?
Well, so it's going to present a risk to a degree, because marijuana causes individuals to have problems properly navigating the road, whether it's medical marijuana or it's illegal. Yeah, and that would be a Class B misdemeanor.
Okay.
We want to explain what's in the different classes.
Yeah, so the different classes, so a Class B misdemeanor drug charge would be marijuana, and then there's a various list of 50 drugs that would be considered less addictive. Your Class A drugs, which is more serious, is your more serious addictive drugs, such as cocaine and heroin and methamphetamine, and those schedule of drugs. So, yeah, with the theft, if we were to reduce that just to misdemeanors, that allows someone to steal up to $1,500 before it becomes a felony. So, with the drugs, personally, I think the ordinance we have right now is more lenient than most communities, and I believe that five-year cap gives someone the ability to rehabilitate themselves, show that they've overcome whatever addiction it is, and they've lived a clean life. If the council feels maybe five years is too long, we could reduce that.
As far as drugs, I do drug test all employees. Anytime a complaint comes in that they feel the driver wasn't 100% on top of their driving the day, I drug test them too. So I try whatever I can to make sure if there was a marijuana in the past, or maybe they're recently doing things I don't know about. I still try to drug test them and make sure they are 100% safety in mind for the town, so.
Yeah, five years is, five years is a long time.
It's a long time.
People can, people can make a lot of changes in their lives in the course of five years.
And two months, I can change, I mean.
Sure, sure, and I, as Councilwoman Hartley indicated, I mean, it is a public safety issue for our streets and the people on our streets, but at the same token, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Cousins that we do need to help people. And if, if there's the proper vetting, I wouldn't have a problem with us looking at lowering this to three years as opposed to five. Now, that would be something that I would like to have discussion on, and I don't know how my other councilmen feel about it, but I believe that we ought to give an opportunity for people, particularly if you are working as hard for these clients and your employees as you say you are, and that you want to make sure that you get the best people for your business, because that's to your advantage, for people to continue using your taxicab.
Exactly, and if they're grateful and working hard, and they keep at it, they're your best employees, because they know what they, what chance they were given, and hopefully, they want to keep it going.
Right.
These, these, these offenses that you've run into, how, how far back are they? I mean-
Some have been a year, some have been six months, some have been three years. But in my, I notice for the most part, a lot of them are a first-time offense, though. If there are multiple offenses, I'm sorry, even if, in that case, I understand you're not getting it, I don't want to give you a shot, but if it was a one-time thing that happened last year, two years, to me, you've had plenty of time to make up, to make up for it. And if you stayed clean in the last year, that shows something for me there.
I'm sure that you've let various drivers go for all kinds of reasons. Would it be okay, Mayor, if we asked Chief Adams to speak just for a moment? I'd be interested to know if, if our public safety officers have had any issues or with any of this in their line of work here in the city?
Good evening, Chief Adams with the Police Department. Uh, no, not to my knowledge. I, I have talked in length with, with Mr. Rommel about this and then support his direction. There's always perceived or real risks, you know, we're always concerned about those things, and you may have an outlier where somebody, you know, slips through the cracks, but by and large, our officers interact with the, with the taxi drivers somewhat regularly, especially if they're out looking for DUIs. We've actually seen a decrease in the DUIs, we think, because of an increased use in taxi services, but, but no, no direct issues that I can think of-
With the drivers themselves.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
What about, Chief, what about Ubers and these other, other, I mean-
We have no regulations.
We have no regulations, right, so is it really, I don't know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many of those exist here, but likewise, no issues with those drivers.
Do they do drug testing, Uber and these other companies, they don't? And it, how, how does that compare to that?
The Uber drivers are under our ordinance, if you're driving somebody somewhere to get, and you're getting paid for it, you're supposed to get a license, so-
It's faster, but-
They're covered.
But you have no way of regulating what car on the road is actual Uber. At least if the taxi's in town, you know, we have our decals everywhere, you know who we are.
Correct.
So.
It's a little like Airbnbs.
Uber does, the company does background checks and that type of stuff.
Sure.
I know from just talking to some of them, but. So.
So how does the agency feel about that?
If we were to lower the time period and allow the misdemeanor Bs, could we require as part of that application process for them to provide the drug testing results, or do we want to get into that at all?
The city would be having to fit the bill, we're going to require that, we're going to have to provide that.
If they're under my services, I pay it all, no problem. If I'm the one making sure they're legal and being safe, my company has no problem paying that.
My suggestion would be if Mr. Ward's let private companies deal with that. We don't require that.
Well, that's what I was just wondering, if we required that as, as part of his application process, that he provided it, not that we would do the drug testing? If we were to lower, like, the standards? I don't know, just a thought.
I could look into that.
What do you guys think?
I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
What are we, what are you approving?
Approve what?
Well, as, as, as written, the, what he requested.
So do you want the surveillance cameras?
No, no surveillance.
Okay, so-
I thought, I thought Tyler said that was-
Look at the items.
No, that was in there, that was, it's in the ordinance as it's written.
We have to go back to the last week's meeting to look at the, the attachment.
Yeah, if you look at it, it's item number 4A in last week's council packet.
So review it again quickly, Tyler, three changes, right?
Yeah, so the changes were allowing a-
It's number four, right there.
-allowing an applicant to come in and get a temporary driver's permit as long as they provide references, a physician's clearance, and a certified driving record, and a driver's license for A. Then, upon 30 days after receiving that, they would have to get that official background check handed over. If that didn't come to be, then we would just pull their temporary permit. Correct. The second change would be no vehicle can, well, let me, I jumped a spot here. The second change would be a disqualifying status would involve a felony theft, crimes of violence, felony drugs, and, and then we added the language homicide.
And multiple offense too, I think.
Concern that wasn't in there. And then the last section would be that the driver, that the vehicle require a installed surveillance camera.
So the current one doesn't specify if it's misdemeanor ABC for drugs?
Yeah, okay.
Correct?
Correct.
So is that what your cut, motion is covering?
My motion would, would, would take out the, the camera, surveillance camera.
And what, and right now it says five years.
And, and I'd like to, I'd like to change that five years in my motion to make it six months.
Do you want it to be any misdemeanor or just Class B and C?
What's the, what's the thoughts in the council? I don't know, I mean, I'm-
We should allow misdemeanor A.
Yeah.
No, I don't either, I don't either.
Drugs.
No, I don't know. I think the way that it's spelled out in the proposal ordinance of last week with the, the-
The B and C.
B and C is probably what we should look at, and, and the changing of that language, adding the homicide and the felony theft and those things back into it, I think is appropriate, in my view.
So you want felony theft, not misdemeanor theft?
Right, well, the A and B, whatever, I mean, I, I agree with what, what the consensus is, so.
Misdemeanor part is you want B and C, but not A. Misdemeanor part is you want B and C, but not A.
Correct, right.
What, uh.
Correct.
And then.
And I could go with six, I'd, I'd like to see six months or max a year, but that's, um, I'll, I'll just say six months and, and, uh, he wants to.
Okay, are you clear on that question?
Yeah, so I have a class A misdemeanor drugs and higher, which are going to the felony range.
Right.
Just going to restrict it.
Mm-hmm.
What about for theft? Right now, it's written as any felony theft. So the proposal would allow any theft under fifteen hundred dollars.
Maybe you have a multiple offense, or those two offenses are misdemeanors, then they're no go, because clearly they're not learning, but at one time.
If you get two.
This is problematic, getting two compliment.
So if you get three charges of theft, the DA is going to jack it up to a felony anyway. It's like a three-strikes thing.
Right.
So that's kind of a, the, the system set up to take care of that anyway. What, I would suggest if you're going to lower it to B and Cs on drugs, you just lower it to B and Cs all the way around and keep it consistent. If we start having all these different things, that's going to get.
Exactly, I think we can complicate this too much, so. Let's go with that.
So class A theft, class A and higher with drugs, and then would you let, you want to reduce the five years to six months?
That's what Councilman Cousins is proposing, yes. And deleting the surveillance cameras.
Is everybody okay with six months?
I could go a year even. I, I just think it's, I think if somebody can make a lot of changes in a year.
Yeah, six months maybe isn't long enough.
Yeah, I, I agree, I don't.
I'll amend, I'll amend that to a year then, I'll go a year.
Okay, so we have a motion.
My final answer.
In a second.
And a second. Okay, we'll start, and so that was a year timeline, yes. Okay.
Correct.
Councilman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Okay.
And we will, we will watch this, we will see how it goes.
Well, thank you, Council, I appreciate it. Everybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Consider an ordinance accepting the annexation of property located at nineteen twenty-five North Thirty-One Hundred West.
Good evening, Harla Fawson. Let's go civil again. I don't know if there's been any questions on this, we've got a parcel that we've have, uh, in consideration to be annexed in, it's right, I think that's the Sycamore Trails, so it's that parcel right there. And I know the owner does have water rights, and he was very anxious to deed those over to the city, I just don't know if it's all been done. He was more than happy to get rid of them.
So the MOU speaks of that, and we'll make sure that we have those before we send, if it's approved, before we send the paperwork up to the state to be get recorded.
This is not an island, it's, it's adjacent to other city property.
Right, the city boundary comes right now, goes and then drops down and then continues along, so.
Okay. Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
All right, we'll start with Councilman Adams.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Consider an ordinance amending the Cedar City Ordinance Three A pre-treatment. It's not here.
That was a pretty exciting discussion last week.
Yeah, he didn't even come back to talk anymore, we've got questions.
Yeah, I got lots of questions.
On Pete's behalf, he'd use zero acronyms.
Yeah, that was.
Which was really cool. So that's, so he gets a gold star for that?
Yeah, so he gets a pass. Okay.
When the ordinance has two pages of acronym definitions, not using actions is a big thing.
Not using one, that was.
And based on the fact that this is a federal mandate handed down from the states, passing on to us, and we're just complying with those, I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Right. But yes, it wasn't an exciting thing that we didn't get acronyms. All right, consider an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-three, Article Nine, regulating short-term rentals.
Welcome, everyone.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? What if we were to have our deliberation or whatever, but allow two from, two for and two against maximum? Would that be acceptable, everybody? As far as just public comments regarding this issue, what if we allowed two for and two against?
I, I think if, in, in my opinion, if we, if, if it's somebody we haven't heard from, perhaps we give them a couple of minutes. I mean, we've, we've heard from a lot of people on this issue who are very passionate about it, and I think we know what their issues and concerns are, but if Mr. Dallin hasn't spoken to us yet, I don't believe, and all the litany of meetings clear back to July, maybe you did back in July and I just don't remember it, but.
We can do that, we can let, like, ten or fifteen minutes of public comments of people we haven't heard from in the last couple meetings, and then we can let the council start to kind of discuss and.
Because I think people.
Maybe stagger one, you know, one for, one against, stagger them back and forth or something.
If they're here. Right.
So we'll do, uh, ten minutes, fifteen minutes max, and we'll, so if you haven't talked already, um, then the council will, you can come up, just make sure you state your name, or I will cut you off and stop you halfway through.
Dean Vernon. Mayor, can I suggest that instead of saying ten or fifteen minutes aside, give each individual like three minutes or two minutes? Because one person, as we did last week, stood up and spent the whole time.
That is.
Per individual, two minutes, three minutes.
But if we've already heard it before, then we don't need to hear it again, so.
And that hopefully makes it so we all respect each other. That's the goal, is to everybody respect each other's time with the, so if you'd like to come up and you haven't spoken already.
Paul? Will you keep me on a timer, please? Thank you. My name is Chris Stollin. I'm a real estate appraiser in Cedar City, I've been here now for twenty-six years, and I've been appraising properties in, uh, Iron County, Washington County, and Beaver County for those twenty-six years.
That microphone is a Geiger cam.
Give your mic.
And that's, excuse me.
Sorry.
Can you start over, Chris?
No.
I've, I've listened to the discussions, I've listened to it on, um, you know, on the, uh, computer and, uh, heard discussions. And the thing that I want to point out is, um, it's really quite simple. And it's, uh, it's the bundle of rights that we are given as property owners. And bundle of rights is a, um, a, a kind of a legal presentation in law school on how to identify what we're trying to do with our property rights and, and the history of property rights, and it's kind of a really cool and simple concept. And in the bundle of rights are sticks inside of a bundle of rights of property and property rights and property ownership. And among the sticks is the right, an owner of a property has to rent his property. It is a right, it has been a right for five, six, seven hundred years, it comes out of common law practice. And, and in the United States, we've adopted it, and we've taken, uh, property rights very, very seriously. And I've seen people, um, I've actually, in a community, um, worried about soccer games at the end of the street at the elementary school, and all the parents coming up into the streets and parking their cars on Saturdays. And these cars blocking, you know, filling up curb space on Saturdays. And I've actually seen people come out of their houses or stand guard in their lawn chairs out front to chase and bark at people as they park in front of their house on a public street, because they were worried that there was going to be, it was going to drive their property values down, because people were watching a soccer game, or bringing their children to a soccer game at an elementary school. I've seen communities, um, make rules that are really quite unenforceable, however, they really can make their neighbors mad. I've seen cities pass rules that kind of change the cultural flavor of their historical, um, rule writing. There is, in this case, that kind of situation. So, in my view, on how we need to look at this, is the bundle of rights. Now, every one of us share in the, in Cedar City, we've agreed that we can't all afford a policeman, we all can't afford a fireman, we can't all afford to put a street in front of our house, but we're willing to be taxed. So we can all have these services to put in sewers and water. And so we, we share each other's tax burden to be able to allow everyone to live in the community. And a lot of that tax burden is passed on to the property owner. So here we are, we're in a property ownership situation, and we're looking very seriously at trying to whittle at one of the sticks inside of that bundle of property rights, and we're whittling at it. So now, to whittle at it, it seems to me that you need evidence that there's been harm. If there's harm, we got to whittle at it, we got to make some sort of adjustment. I haven't heard harm, I've heard theory, I've heard supposition, but I haven't seen any evidence, really, of harm being done. But I do see someone whittling at a property right that has been mine, has been everyone who's been a property owner for at least a couple of centuries in the United States. And that, so to be able to whittle at that right, if you can't prove harm, then why whittle? If you can't prove harm, there's no need to whittle. So a situation could be, we're worried about transients, we're worried about filling up our streets with, um, cars and buses and bringing property values down, dogs and cats living together. The, uh, that's what we're worried about. And what we need to be worried about, are we whittling at property rights that have been ours? So I have a mother, I had a mother-in-law, she needed to rent her house so we could give her extra care in her eighties. She had to rent her house. She lived in a neighborhood that didn't want her to rent her house. She couldn't rent her house.
I'm going to give you a heads up, you are at five minutes.
Okay, so, whittling a property right is dangerous business. And it's, and you guys are the guardians. We, and that's all I have to say, but look at the stick that we're trying to whittle. And do we have evidence that we're being harmed by any Airbnbs? If we don't, then we need to stop whittling. Thank you.
Spencer Jones, uh, I believe this is the first time that I've come and brought up this issue here with you, so hopefully I qualify to, to be able to make a few comments here. I haven't been to many of the meetings here, and in fact, um, I think it was kind of a, a global understanding that tonight was not going to be a, a public hearing. Um, and so I was approached by several, um, people who own short-term rentals here wanting to kind of my take on it, and, and if I knew of what was going on, and so I thought I would come here tonight. Um, there's, uh, there's quite a few owners that don't live here, um, that might not see the public notices or the, you know, the, um, municipal noticing website, to, to even be a part of this conversation. I would just ask for you to, to think of really how many complaints have you had here as a city pertaining to problems with short-term rentals? Just in a quick review of the, um, the online, um, YouTube and so forth here, the past meetings, as I've tried to get up to speed on this, I, I don't think there's been a lot of complaints on this, and so, you know, a, a lot of the people here, I, I recognize faces from where you, you live as I've, as I've built homes up at, up in that area. And I feel for you, I've got a next-door neighbor that does do short-term rentals. Um, I live on a cul-de-sac, and, um, I have asked my neighbor very nicely if, when people do come, if they can just park in front of their place instead of my place. As you well know, cul-de-sac lots are kind of pie-shaped, so the frontage in front of, um, cul-de-sac lots sometimes is, is less than, than other lots. They were very, very nice to, to be able to make that change, and I haven't had any further problems. Uh, just really concerned with some of the, the proposed language, um, that is before you hear this evening. One is, um, two occupants per bedroom and a maximum of ten. As, as building a lot of houses here through the years, um, we have built a lot of houses that are five, six, and seven-bedroom homes. And so a maximum of ten people, um, you, you, I would just ask for you to think of how many, how many people are in your own personal families or in your kids' families, and if there was two of them that went together to, to do a trip together, how many, um, people would that be? I think you'd find that that's probably going to be more than ten. Uh, parking per bedroom number, um, to have a nine-by-eighteen stall for every bedroom, I think is a significant hardship. Yeah, and I've even thought, you know, well, maybe it's a three-car garage with RV parking, and maybe the RV parking can, can work as a parking stall or something like that. If that is something you're going to consider, I would just like, or ask for you to, to maybe make some clarification. I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but just from past projects, that there's a, a parking, uh, there's language in a parking ordinance that does not allow parking in the front setback. So if you're looking at maybe allowing people to have parking on their driveway of the residential home, to maybe make that, that clarification. Because for a normal single-family home, unless they have RV parking, there's two stalls in the garage, and that's really it. So, um, the other thing, uh, the Appeal Authority, and I'm trying to be quick here, because I'm probably getting close to five minutes. Uh, the Appeal Authority, I'm just concerned with it being in the Board of Adjustments, I don't know, you know, with Tyler, obviously he's done the drafting and, and very respectful with, with his knowledge there, but would this need to fall under the, the, um, the criteria, the statutory criteria that would qualify for something to go before the Board of Adjustments?
We actually eliminated.
That's gone.
Okay, okay, great, okay, thank you. Uh, just where there is so many people here in our community that do notice, or that do do short-term rentals, and this is something that you are going to consider adopting this evening, I would just ask you to make a, a little different acceptance, exception this time, because of the number of people that are currently doing this, that are detriment, detrimentally relying upon this income to cover the debt service on their home.
You are at five minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll be very quick.
All right.
Um, and, and to specifically notice those people. Um, because we've got a group of people in a small section of town on one side, I feel it's only ethical to notice those other people that specifically are currently doing it. The geographic area of Cedar, I do a lot of traveling, and I would say probably eighty percent of what I do is vacation rentals. Um, I was just on the big island of, of Hawaii over in Kona, um, here about three weeks ago, and as I've started learning about this, I looked into some of their ordinances. The short-term rental, they just have a very small sign that's put out in front of the property, noticing everyone for a period of time, saying, hey, neighbors, we're going to do this. There's really not a protest period, it's just putting them on notice, so if there is a complaint, that they can direct that to, to the certain jurisdiction. And then, like I just said, I think Terry, you can relate to this being, you know, a, a banker. You know, it, it could be a big blow to, you know, to a, a number of different mortgage companies and lenders if, uh, if properties, you know, are mortgaged and the repayment, the source of repayment is vacation rentals, short-term rentals, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, Tom Jet, I would have spoke last week, but I didn't. The, just one, I won't even take up thirty seconds, just keep one thing in mind, the unintended consequences of your, of your decisions. Because the free marketplace is a real funny place out there, and there's some real creative entrepreneurs that we may come back and go, wow, I sure wish we would have kept it the other way, because some of the unintended consequences of, of this might come back to really bite us, and, and we might regret some of the decisions that we make. I do not have anything in the pipeline, do not own anyone. I don't even personally know of anybody, I, I guess I know of one person has one, but I do understand how the human mind works. So just keep that one, one thing in mind in your deliberations this evening.
Tom, would you share with this group your thoughts about parking?
Well, that's going to put me over my 30 seconds.
Yeah, you've exceeded that.
You're taking 30 of my seconds.
If I must. Some people have asked, made comments, what's the difference between a landlord that maybe rents year-round to people versus the difference between a vacation rental home, or some of the other names they have for them? Well, there's a couple main reasons. I believe a person, and these are generalized statements, and so I hope I don't offend too many. I think people that are using vacation homes are traditionally more respectful of neighbors, and they're a little bit more mature than many people that are using, that are renting homes on a year-round basis. That's number one. Number two, and that doesn't mean people that rent homes on a year-round basis are bad, but in a student town, we've kind of got an ugly view from some of the housing problems, some of the parking issues. And hopefully, that's going to get minimized as time goes on. The people that are in vacation rentals, they usually come for two or three days at a time. That's usually how long vacation rental homes are rented at one period of time, usually three, four days, maybe on the outside during the week. And this is usually only for a period of three, four, maybe five months. And this is what my reading has indicated. Now, San Diego's probably much more than that because of the seasons, that they have more of a temperate year-round season, or maybe a Las Vegas, whereas Cedar City, for example, has a much more condensed season for that. So I think when we talk about parking, long-term landlords' parking and short-term, I think you're really talking about two different classes of people. And I apologize to the people on Ridge Road that have had such a negative experience. I wish that never would have happened. And I can understand the frustration. I really can. But over-regulating the parking or a few other issues just will not be the answer in this matter. That will not cure the problem. It will probably create more of a problem. And one thing also to keep in mind, the city is going to start making a whole lot of money on vacation rentals, and this should not be an economic decision. But people that are looking to stay.
Literally are now at five minutes.
People that are really wanting to stay, they're going to just start building them in the county, or Parawan, or Eneek, or someplace like that. And then we're going to lose out on those dollars as a result. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Can I add something? The way you set up the rules.
Go to the microphone, please.
The way you set up the rules, I mean, we've all spoken because we're so passionate about it. So now we've had three negatives.
And we've heard all of the others, plus have gotten all of the emails throughout the week.
Yes, we have.
So, I don't think anyone is.
We haven't forgotten.
Yes. And we have minutes, and we have everything else. Let's let the council discuss some of the things that they have in their mind for a little while, and then we can kind of see where to go from there. So, we'll open it up to the council for a little bit.
Can I start?
Sure.
Someone's got to.
I just want to thank everybody for this process. This second go-around has been a whole lot more civil and a whole lot more constructive. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the tireless efforts of those who are concerned citizens. I think if we could, we'd give a bonus to Tyler for.
But we can't.
I know, I understand. For his perseverance and hard, hard work of the staff and everyone else. So I just want to begin with a thank you, because we've made tremendous progress. And what is before us is a good, solid ordinance. There are still some things to be discussed. I'll leave that to my, the rest of my colleagues here, but I'm just very pleased that the process has worked. And I'm grateful that it has worked the way it has. I'll just start with that and then let.
Let me say a couple of things before we get into the nitties and the gritties, because I think you're going to find that there's four different points, five different points of view up here. Excuse me, I can't count. But I think you have to understand that all of us want what's in the best interest of our community. We've all chosen to live here because we like this city. And unlike our friends in Washington, we're going to find a way to find compromise and work through this. And I think we've made tremendous steps, and I think Councilman Isman's correct. I would say that 99% of what we have in front of us is a pretty good ordinance. I know that I have a couple of things I'd like to see adjusted. We're going to talk about those in just a minute, as well as Councilman Hartley and all the others. But I think that the spirit of what is here is trying to make this work. And I want to make sure that I'm speaking for myself, but there's no intention ever to have short-term rentals go away. So, to the folks that spoke earlier, there was never our intent. The whole notion of Airbnbs and VRBOs and Homeaways and all the rest, they're hit a stike. Our issue is how do we, as a community, address that, and try and be proactive about it, and stay on top of it. And, you know, the great thing about a democracy, if it doesn't work, we can come back and we can make adjustments again. So we may not get actually everything right the first time, but we're going to do the very best we can, and hopefully, we can all continue to work in the best interest of our community. So, I don't know if anyone else has opening statements they want to make, or do we just sort of get into the actual ordinance itself?
Yeah, it looks like you get into the ordinance.
Okay.
You two covered that. Thank you.
Those were phenomenal opening statements.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
I don't mind stepping out and letting you know some of my thoughts, my concerns, and kind of where we are. I don't know if it would be helpful, Tyler, because since the audience and the people listening to us don't have, we probably ought to let them know maybe currently where we are on the amendment, and then where we want to go from there. Because many of them have not seen it since the Planning Commission recommendation that was sent to us.
Right. So I did share that Planning Commission positive recommended.
Right.
Ordinance. So, would you like me to go through that?
Well.
Or would you like me to go through?
We have made some changes since then.
So, so the addition that was recommended by the Planning Commission, recommended just some introductory things that said, hey, we're not going to allow an owner of a short-term rental to rent this out on a consecutive basis. So in essence, not take a short-term rental and convert it into a long-term rental. We have language that says we want to make sure that the short-term rental is compatible with the surrounding uses. As an example, we don't want the use of mass transit to transport renters to and from a residential neighborhood. In the license application section, this would be, this section here is key in my mind, because when an owner of a short-term rental comes in to fill out the application, there are certain paragraphs that they would initial or check, showing that they are educated on what the law's on, they're going to abide by them. That gives the city both an education component and also teeth later on if we find out they're violating these rules, because we can show that they initialed, that they were going to live by them. So, the application part is going to require them to give the address of the building, proof of liability insurance, proof, as it's written right now, proof of adequate parking, their lodging tax number, a submitted diagram of the residence identifying bedrooms and parking, signature of the owner certifying that they're going to collect and remit taxes on a timely basis, a designation of a local property owner, someone who can be contacted within 24 hours, or someone who can be contacted, and then within 24 hours, take remedial action to resolve any complaints that may come. The owner is then required to certify that they'll use the short-term rental in conformity with local, state, and federal laws. Again, they certify that they're going to have that property representative. There's language that says that they're required to have an adequate amount of off-street parking, which is defined as one parking place available per bedroom that they're going to rent out. They understand that the renter may not use the short-term rental for a purpose not incidental to the normal residential use. Based on kind of the nodding of heads, last week, I struck the language that dealt with specifically identifying bachelor parties, bachelorette parties, concerts, things of that nature. Those do not fall under the category of normal residential use. So it just gives us a broad term to deal with these problems as they come up, instead of specifying specific uses, and then finding out later, you know, where someone makes an argument we didn't specify. They assume responsibility for their guests. They need to make their best efforts to ensure they're not disturbing the neighborhood. They're not going to use any of the ancillary buildings, yard space for activities outside of the dwelling for the short-term rental. They're going to certify that they're not in violation of any homeowner association rules or CCNRs. The license procedure, and they would be required, and this was another change I made based on what I, the sense I got from the council last week, they're required to give notice to neighbors within 300-foot radius. That notice is standard mail or hand-delivered. So we struck the certified mail because of the expense. That notice, if anyone has issues with that, they can discuss their problems with the city building official. We changed that word to discuss instead of contest, because really, there's nothing to contest. If they've met the ordinance, city's going to grant them the permit. Restrictions on use, nothing changed there. The renter is required to use it for normal residential use. And then there's the max occupancy language, saying no more than two guests per bedroom plus two guests per home. However, no time shall the maximum occupancy exceed 10 guests. And really, the last couple of sections is we put in language that said if they're in violation of the ordinance, three or more citations within 12-month period could result in their license being denied, suspended, or revoked. Then we have language that strongly recommends they have adequate ingress and egress to bedrooms, and that each corridor contains a smoke detector, there's a working carbon monoxide detector, and each floor contains a minimum 2A10BC fire extinguisher. The other language that I struck based on last week's conversation was a bedroom as defined by the International Building Code.
One specific question. The parking, one parking space per bedroom, was that, were we going to defer to the parking ordinances that exist in various zones already, or?
Correct. I struck that language saying nine-by-18. The city already has a definition of what a parking space requires. And so we would just, that would align with what we're already doing.
But the one space per bedroom, I mean, that's different. It's 1.3.
That's different.
Right. So the one is different.
In some zones, and so.
The one is different than other zones.
So should we reference the parking ordinances?
Well, I think the way it's written right now, it would be one per bedroom. And I actually made a suggestion that we might use it per where the home is located, because whether they're in R1 through R3, the parking requirements are different, rather than making short-term rentals have its own anomaly. Would that cause an issue to just refer it to whatever zone they're in?
If that's the approach we take, I would suggest striking it altogether, because the home, or the townhome, has already been built to the parking requirements it needed at the time it came through and got a building permit.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, but it wasn't going to be used necessarily as a short-term rental at that time. It might have been a townhome, or a single-family dwelling, or a.
But what I'm saying, should that be different? I don't know.
I don't know. Well, we do say under 4D that proof of adequate parking is required by 2655 of our ordinance, so.
And that references the one parking place per bedroom.
Yeah, that comes down under item M.
If you've got two in your garage, you can have two in the driveway right behind it. That's tandem parking. We do allow that.
We allow that for anyone, correct? Yeah. Well, let me go through and share with you at least my concerns and what I would like to see us speak through, and then others can speak into that, and then who knows where the ball might roll from there. Okay? So overall, I am fine with the ordinance. I think the Planning Commission and all the involved citizens and staff did a great job with this. So, my concern is that I, I'm fine with reducing and taking up the nine-by-18 parking requirement. I like the definition, myself personally, of limiting it for bachelor, bachelorette parties, concerts, sponsored events, because I think it sets some limits. I think it defines what it is. Now, that's not to say that people that have single-family homes don't do those things. They have birthday parties, they have concerts, they have all those things. I've done in my backyard. The difference for me is that I know my neighbors across the street, I know who lives next door to me, and I go to them and I say, listen, my son is getting married next week, or I have a wedding reception in my backyard, which I've had a lot of them, by the way, my poor neighbors. But we set restrictions, and we know what's going on, and they know what's going on. So I think it just helps us to standard for me. So, for me, that is one of the reasons I'd like to see it kept, that language kept in there. I don't know if we want to address these as we go through them, or if you want me to go through my whole list. How would you prefer it, Mayor?
Just go through your whole list.
Okay.
Or you can discuss each individual item. Literally, this is up to you guys.
My only concern with that is that if you start calling out specific activities, then where do you stop, and do you cover them all? It seems to me that the definition normal residential use covers all of those things. And I think if you call out three or four, you may not be calling out an adequate number.
You may, you may not.
And so, I don't know. I just, I didn't, I thought it was unnecessary to have that.
And it may be. I just like to, I may be erring on the side of caution, but, you know, I.
Well, the other thing, if one of these events gets out of hand, we already have nuisance ordinances that would address that. So, that's another reason why I didn't think it was necessary.
I would agree with that, because you can't label them all. They're going to end up leaving something out.
The list could be, like, exhaustive.
Yeah. I am happy that we put in the language about mobile structures, again, and it's item seven, where we're trying to make sure that we cover those spaces so people don't put up tents and other things. But again, keeping it broad enough that it describes it without doing the litany of a list, like you spoke to. Because I think that'll help us have a recourse on that. For me, I guess the other one would be under item eight, restrictions on use. And I personally support the notion of two guests per home and not to exceed a maximum of 10. I know others on the council disagree with that, and I have flip-flopped on this, because I've even sent out emails to people where I was advocating for 12 to 14. And some of you know that, because you probably got the emails from me. But I do believe that community character is important, and I think neighborhoods are important. And I think we can still accomplish that. I know there's families bigger than 10. I get that. But we have bed and breakfasts, we have hotels. And I don't even have a problem with them gathering at the home to have the barbecue at 5:00, but there's not 18 of them sleeping there at nighttime, or 20. And I know 10 is an arbitrary number. But you know what? So is the 35-mile speed limit. So is where we set where the hospital sign should go on your way to the hospital. Yes, there are things that set up triggers for that. But you've got to set a scale somewhere. Is 16 too many? Is 20 too many? But 10's too little? Is 13 the right number? I don't know. Based on my own soul-searching, I would hope that we could stick with that. So I would argue that we keep that in there as per the recommendation.
All right. Is there discussion on that?
Oh, yes.
My argument, yeah, my argument with that is that, you know, in the residential areas where I think it calls out, you know, you have to have a minimum of two off-street parking, you know, per home in R1. And as you said, Paul mentioned, the tandem parking is allowed. So I think the amount of tenants, quote, "per bedroom" would cover, because if they don't have the off-street parking, and I emphasize the off-street parking, not on the street, off the street, then. then that kind of pleases itself, I think, without assigning a number to it. You know, and like you said, there is some larger homes. I know they would maybe get around that or not get around it, but they're probably going to bring three or four or five people per car, so to speak, so they wouldn't have, you know, that many vehicles anyway. But that's just one thought I had in looking at that as opposed to actually capping, you know, a number. It may police itself with the amount per bedroom. I don't know, thoughts?
I agree with that. I think the market, the supply and demand actually will control that. And I just don't think you can select an arbitrary number based on any home. We've got a two-bedroom home versus a six-bedroom home that I think that penalizes the person and takes some of their property rights away, so.
In these discussions that you both are alluding to, you're still talking about two guests per bedroom. Because I do think that we have to look at that somewhere because what we don't want to run into is a situation where a large game room in a home, somebody puts eight bunk beds in there and all of a sudden they put 16 people in one room.
Can I ask you one question? So two per bedroom? You have a mom and dad and small child?
Yeah. And I need to clarify. I was saying the market would determine both of those. I am not putting an occupancy limit on the bedroom. Because that's the point I've looked at. You've got couples with a baby or a small child or whatever. You can reach 10 pretty quickly, and I think that really penalizes a larger home.
So are you assuming that the diagram that we receive in the application, let's say it's a diagram that shows six bedrooms, let's just say, and they would say that they can accommodate, I don't know what the number is, let's say they say they can accommodate 22 people? We're okay with that then if the diagram shows that they have the space and the parking for that. Is that what you're saying, Councilman? So I make sure I understand.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Also recognizing as someone who's used VRBOs for our large family gatherings, that if I look at a home that says it has four bedrooms and it can accommodate 20 people, I'm not going to rent it. So I'm not going to pack five people in there and around on couches and whatnot. That you look at more than just the occupancy on there. You look at the configuration of the home compatible with what your family wants to do, so.
Do you think with the other steps and measures that we have previous to these restrictions on use, do you think this is going to then protect the overall tenor of the short-term rental and the neighborhood that it's surrounding? Do you think that will be protected?
I do believe that it is because I think the record that over all the years that it's been available, there's been two recorded complaints. And I think I'm a small business advocate. I'm also a personal property rights advocate. And I come from that perspective that supply and demand is the basic economics that's just going to control it. It's not going to take over our neighborhoods because there's not enough demand for that. And so I don't think we need to limit.
One thing that I thought about after all of this along the lines, because one of the one of the big problems that was brought up in the discussion, of course, was a bus in the neighborhood, but I can see him, even if you limited it 10 per house, you could still take a bus around to three different houses and drop 10 off out of that 30 member or if it was a 50 contained bus, you'd still have buses in the neighborhoods, which that was one thing that I think was a real problem with me in a lot of our neighborhoods was having a vehicle of that size trying to weasel its way through. Ridge Road may be a slight exception because it's a pretty wide road.
Well, the south half is, the north half.
But the other isn't. And the other subdivisions over there were the one on 1840 house. I don't know how they got a bus through there, but they did. So that was kind of the thinking. And that's been mentioned before. Investors and other people always find ways to get around certain things.
Well, for me, it's not the Airbnbs and it's not the Homeaways that I really have the issue with because those tenants are there. It's the vacation rentals where I think where we're struggling with on most of this, I think. How vacation rentals work as opposed to the others.
Paul, what do you think about this?
Well, the thing that keeps going through my mind is.
Know what you were referring to specifically. Go ahead, Ron. Sorry.
Oh, no, Paul.
The thing that keeps going through my mind is Councilman Phillips brought up the fact that there are snipe signs around town that's advertising beds for sale. And for seven years, as a city, we haven't done deadly to get rid of those signs. They're up for months. So that's illegal to have snipe signs advertising things off-site advertising.
I am. I'm taking them down.
Well, I've taken a lot myself. And no offense to the law enforcement, they're busy, busy guys, and they have a lot of other things to worry about. And the thing that just keeps going through my mind is all these things that we want to regulate and we can't even get snipe signs down. How are we going to regulate all these different rules? You get my point?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, who's going to, Terry brought up the fact you've got a mom and dad and a little baby. That's three in the room, okay? Right? Who's going to enforce that? Who's going to knock on, I'm not going to raise your taxes to hire some Airbnb inspectors, go out and knock on doors, surprise visits, and visit these places. I mean, these rules are I, I, I'll tell you where I stand. I think they ought to be licensed. They ought to pay their taxes. I've heard that the VRBO and Airbnbs collect those taxes or remit them. I don't know if that's true. I haven't called them. I hope they do. I don't know. It'd be interesting to find out. Parking, I think it's unreasonable to require off-site parking if you have a six-bedroom home and that's unreasonable. I don't think you can find it probably a home in Cedar City that has six bedrooms, that has six off-street parking. I guess you could park them on the lawn. I mean, I guess they can, like Tom said, people are going to get creative. They can, they'll pour, they'll put parking lots in the backyard, they'll park on the lawns. I think you're going to have some unintended consequences. I think back about we like to go to Lake Pals a family every year and we rented motels for a lot of those years, but as our family has grown, a couple of years ago, I rented, I was going to rent three motel rooms and it was so expensive and we couldn't even find enough. And so somebody said, why don't you try one of these home, or these vacation rentals? And so we got a house over in Page, Arizona. I think it was in an R1 neighborhood. And I think there was probably maybe 12 of us. I think it was a five-bedroom house. We spent the day at the lake. We got to the house about 6 o'clock. We parked, we pulled our boat into the side of the yard. There was a driveway backed in there. We parked two cars, I think one in front of the house, one in the driveway, just because it would have been a little bit tight. We we did some, you know, we had dinner, we did some laundry, we enjoyed each other's companies of family. We got up early and left. We did that two days. I don't think we bothered anybody. And I think that's I think that's typical of a short-term rental. The bus, I know that's an outlier. I don't think there's many buses delivering people to short-term rentals. I'll bet you couldn't find that happening again in a long time. I don't, maybe it does. I don't know. I could be wrong. I, as a member of the city council for seven years, I've never heard of one complaint until this issue came up. Drew, you were up at the microphone last week and said there was two complaints in 12, 13 years, was it? And when were those complaints? Were they recently or more recent? Okay, so in 13 years, the only complaints that they've had is the recent. I just, I just think, I appreciated Spencer Jones, the comment he made. He has a neighbor that does short-term rentals. Rather than call Enix City and ask them to go and beat up on his neighbor, he walked across the street and said, hey, we got a problem. Could you please keep your people from parking in front of my house? Hasn't been a problem since. I think that's kind of the angle we need to take with a lot of these things. The other point that Chris Dolan brought up that I appreciated was harm. I don't know, I guess the bus came up and dropped some kids off, a lot of kids. But where was the harm? I know that upset some people and I agree that that can be a pro, if you think that's going to continue to be a problem, that could be an issue. But I don't know where the harm actually took place in that incident. I really don't. And so I have some, I have a lot of issues with his ordinance as written, so I'll just leave it at that.
Well, my final thing on my list that I want to bring up is that under the number 14, under the city safety concerns, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about financial hardship, and I want you to know our business license for this is $40. Okay? And we took out the certified letters. As long as you notify people, we're not trying, the city is not making money off of this ordinance, okay? I just make that clear. But I think that we want to look out for the safety of people. So it seems to me, I know we are currently strongly recommending that each room contain adequate ingress and egress, that each bedroom quarter leading to a bedroom contain a smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and a minimum of 2A 10B C fire extinguisher. I would like to suggest that we require that they have a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector because that is not expensive. I have them in my home. And the others, we strongly recommend. I have a 1935 home. So that is something I want us to talk about and see if that is something that we could consider making that small change there.
I would be in favor of doing that as long as the city didn't have to inspect it if it's part of the application process. So they certify that they have those in the home, but we can't be making Drew's team going out and expecting to make sure.
I would agree with that.
Any new construction covers that. We'd be talking about older homes before it was required.
Right. And a point of clarification, Councilman Hartley, is when I was talking about the Airbnbs and Homeaways not being the issue, I was referring to parking because generally they're renting one room or two rooms out of their home in those situations. And so parking doesn't seem to be the same situation because there's usually one vehicle or maybe two vehicles. So that's sort of the only point I was making relative to vacation rentals. That's all. So those are my issues that I would like to have under consideration and so I've gone through my list.
All right. Are there others that would like to bring up items, concerns, questions, comments?
Seems to me it really boils down to about three things, and one of them is the maximum occupancy and guests and the because the majority of the other language, with the exception of perhaps Councilman Cousins, I don't want to speak for him, but we're okay with that. Except for these two or three things. And so I think that's what we need to focus on.
I would like to hear Mr. Isom's thoughts, please, because he is the representative also of us.
I think I've shared them along the way. What more would you like to hear from me?
I have a very few to answer last meeting, so would you please?
Sure. Like I let off, I'm very pleased with what we've come up with here. Pardon me? What?
Will you come up if you?
What pleased me, what pleased me is this ending product.
The end product, the end product.
The end product, yes. It has become, it's a very good very good product. In fact, I could very easily make a motion to approve the ordinance as written except for 8B. And that's the two-per-bedroom, 10 maximum. I join with my fellow council members and don't think we ought to be imposing a maximum number, so. So those are my comments.
I have one question though, really quick. When we get to which version we're talking about?
Yep.
Are we talking about the version Tyler went through tonight?
Yes.
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 The one that was recommended by the city council after the January 16th.
So I was like, we first need to make sure we're all on the same.
That was the one in our package and that's the one we're referring to.
That's what we're referring to, that version, the one that Tyler went through.
That is correct.
That also helps hopefully the audience know where we are is it's what that was described. Okay, that helps.
Okay.
So I guess.
Can I answer your question, Marion?
So I guess one of my questions maybe is for Tyler. My recommendation or thoughts relative to the safety issues, is that something we can do as part of the application process?
Yes, we just can't require them to physically alter the building.
No, I understand that. And I don't think that that doesn't necessitate that.
So in the licensing process, they would have to represent that those things are in place.
Correct. I would add that to the application as one of the sentences they initial.
And then we strongly recommend the other two items, but we can't require that as for older homes and things of that nature. Correct?
We could require that 9A 10B C fire extinguisher. The only one I see an issue with requiring is adequate ingress and egress.
Let me let the council keep going to see if they, I mean, that was kind of what we had set out at the beginning was the council was going to be able to have their chance to talk through items. So.
Are there? Well, to summarize where I'm at right now is similar to Craig's, only I would go with the recommendations on the safety issues and the parking, I think one per bedroom is probably too many, and I'd like to go with whatever the the zone that the short-term rental is located in, that's what parking they have to comply with. Off-street. Unless you see, Kit, do you see a problem with that or?
Obviously, we have different requirements for R1 and R2 and R3.
Right. And then the no limit on the occupancy would be my third. I'm okay with everything else.
I'm fine with that except the limits. And of course, you've already heard me speak to that, so. I think that's where we are is on those three issues. I think we're all in agreement relative to the change of the safety issues. I shouldn't say all. There's a consensus. And so now it really is the issue of the occupancy and I guess the parking, I I think that's fine. I think that's fine as long as it's approved. I know there's a question, well, I don't want to speak for you, sir. About the parking.
Well, there was one here that's inspection, prior to licensure, the city billing officials shall conduct an onsite inspection to verify adequate off-street parking. Something that, I mean, how is that going to do to you guys, Drew?
Drew, you have to come up.
Sorry. I mean, you guys are just barely eking it out right now with what you, right? I mean.
Yeah, we are. Drew Jackson, City Building Department, we're slammed and we'll try to do what we can. That could be even a Google map search by air to verify.
And we're also not talking about them a licensures. I mean, I can't imagine there's not going to be hundreds of these happening.
Right.
You know? I don't know.
Maybe the first year.
Yeah, we should be so lucky to get them to license and we should be so lucky.
So.
He could do that, verify the onsite.
On 12, is everybody, I mean, what does the council think about that, that the owner understands that he assumes responsibility for all guest activities? Are you ready to, I mean, what?
Well, yeah, I think if I if I have a party at my home, I'm responsible for those guests. Now, if somebody gets drunk and starts beating up a neighbor, the police are going to come and they're going to arrest that guy, but there is a certain amount of responsibility. I'm okay with that because I think.
So what if they leave intoxicated and they run over somebody? Are you responsible?
I don't know if that.
Is that?
I think the owner is responsible within the scope of his licensure. So if the owner keeps renting it out to the rowdy crowd and they get the three citations and they get their license yanked, I think that's the scope of the responsibility. I don't think it imputes to them.
Legal, like liability or?
That sort of liability to where they're going to be responsible for the independent guy getting in a car drunk and hurting somebody. I don't think that's what it's intended to do.
What about the notice, the 300-foot radius notice of an Airbnb?
I'm fine with that.
I like it. But I'm glad we took the certification stuff out of it. I think this is a grand opportunity for neighbors to.
I think this is a grand opportunity for neighbors to talk to each other. And I can't think of a better way to, to communicate to them what's, what's gonna be happening in the neighborhood and then work out the details amongst yourselves. We do that all the time. I have a neighbor that holds an annual meeting at his house once a year. He has about thirty cars parked in our cul-de-sac. I'll emphasize cul-de-sac. I let him use all of my spaces and everything else, because it's one night, he comes over and says, hey, it's time for the annual meeting. Are you gonna be okay with all the cars for three hours? And we all say, all six of us say, sure. You know, it's one, two, three hours of, of a year. And, but I think it's a great opportunity, and I think that opens a communication channel between neighbors. And I think that's what needs to be, to happen. If you have good relationships with your neighbors, you can usually resolve lots of problems if you just talk to each other about things and don't, don't let it get out of hand. And I think that's a, a great opportunity. I realize, having lived in another state, and I was mentioning this to the city manager today, as we're having another discussion, but I, I lived in an area out of state where this was, could never happen with front doors next to each other by a dividing wall, and nobody knew who lived next door in the duplex. And it was reality. And coming from Cedar City, I was like, are you kidding me? You know, and they say, no, I don't know who was over there. That's why when the truck backed up at two in the morning and all the furniture disappeared, I just assumed the neighbors were moving, but I don't know them. Actually, their house got robbed and cleaned out. But that's kind of what, what I had mentioned in another comment with this. And I, and I think that's, I think that that can be resolved. And, you know, if there's issues in giving them notice upfront is great. I don't have a problem with that. I had one neighbor mention that they were going to think about doing it, and I said, no, it's not allowed. In our neighborhood, it's not. So she was grateful that she'd come and talked to me and, and was made aware of that. So anyway, I, I think that's sufficient, is what I'm getting at, without going on any longer on notification.
Yeah, agreed. I did want to note, you know, in the section where it says you've got proof of the, we had certified mail, but now it says proof of mail. I'm not sure how we would word that to, I don't know if they're just gonna certify that they've notified everybody either by mail or so would need, if, if that does go that way, we'd need some different wording there. But I don't know if everybody's amenable to it. I'd like to make a motion that we approve it, the version that from our January sixteenth meeting, no occupancy limits, parking as governed by whatever zone that they're in, and the safety requirements, the, the two, the B and C, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide move to an application certification, the other two are as a recommendation.
So carbon monoxide and smoke detectors required, everything else recommended.
Did you then have limit per bedroom?
Pardon me?
No limit per bedroom?
No.
Is there a second to that motion?
Market determines that, so.
Before the council votes, don't we have an opportunity now as the city committee that's been involved in this to respond to some of these issues?
Normally, we just, if there's a motion, we see if there is a second on the motion.
I'm okay if we want to allow things, as long as there are new comments that, that have not. I mean, I will set my motion aside if you want to allow that. But what do you guys think?
I think we could allow some on the other side.
I mean, we can allow another, like fifteen minutes worth of comments.
Yeah, I think we should. I think we should allow people that want to speak to us.
Okay.
But please try and be brief, so we can all.
We'll allow, and I'll set my stopwatch, another fifteen minutes worth of comments, and then there is the standing motion, then we'll get on with that. So just know that we have fifteen minutes, so keep it brief and state your name, because that will take up time if I have to cut you off for that. Okay?
I'm Debbie Glym, and I just need a clarification.
Yes.
My clarification is, the house that had the bus pull-up on Ridge Road had one bedroom with nine beds in it, with no limit per bedroom. That seven or eight-bedroom house can have seventy-two people. And I think that's exorbitant. Our plumbing won't handle it, the sewer won't handle, the water?
The thing that, that I worry about, that is an outlier or an anomaly. We don't have them, and we don't make.
It's not, it's happened twice.
Yeah, but we don't make laws to govern, like, one incident, you know?
Make laws for criminals who do it incorrectly, who come to your neighborhood, you expect good. We expect exactly what you say, not what we got. So we're entrusting you to protect us from that. And the nine people who are sleeping in three bunk beds high in a bedroom with one little basement window. That's what we're talking about. I don't mind if your whole family wants to go. I, I really don't. But we still will have abuses, and our recourse is coming to you. And that's why we're here. That's why we said limits.
But there are also the other side of all of the property owners that are coming to us saying, don't take our property rights away.
Totally. But in somewhere.
That's what we're trying to find, is a middle ground.
And unlimited is sky's the limit. And that's my only concern, but you clarified that. Thank you. And think about sky's the limit.
I've thought a lot about it.
Okay. Please wait, don't just yell things from the audience.
Come forward, Dean.
Thank you, Dean Vernon, six eighty-seven Ridge Road, live in a big house, seven bedrooms. I know of a neighbor's home that's up for sale, has two bedrooms, and they advertise they can sleep thirty people. Paragraph eight is essential, and the council members ought to recognize that they have a responsibility to think about what's happened to society. Airbnbs were, did not exist when I built my home. They're here to stay. And there needs to be some regulation on them because they affect everybody's property rights. You don't shout fire in a crowded room, even though we have First Amendment rights. You don't put five animals in a house because we have ordinances. We have zoning laws that restrict things. So if you eliminate the restriction of use in this proposed new ordinance, you're not doing anything to protect, and I, I look at you, Councilwoman Hartley, to protect citizens. We aren't saying you shouldn't have Airbnbs. We shouldn't say you shouldn't have vacation rentals, but they need to be reasonably regulated in the sense that you can't have a two-bedroom house and have thirty people come in a Le Bus. I've seen many Le Buses on the south end of Ridge Road parked on homes. And so I say to you, I'm strongly urging you to give some reasonable restrictive uses to the numbers, either by, by, by bedrooms. And secondly, you've got to define the bedroom in this thing to be something more than the International Building Code, because you've decided last week it doesn't mean anything. A bedroom should be a minimum, I would suggest, of seventy-five to eighty square feet with other, other restrictions on the egress and egress. But you've got to have some limitations, else we've done nothing to help this community adapt to this process of Airbnbs. To say no restrictions and let the market take care of itself, you know what's gonna happen.
I didn't say no restrictions on everything. We've got about eight pages of new restrictions, so I can't say that we're not doing anything.
No, and I, I.
But I, I am strongly opposed to the occupancy limit.
So you, you, you would be comfortable?
And I'm strongly in favor of it.
A two-bedroom house to have thirty people live there or to spend nights there?
No. But I, I'm thinking that people probably wouldn't rent it. I, I, I mean, some, some would. But if, if it's a problem, then we have ordinances to take care of the problem. If they're inside the home and you don't even know they're there, is it a problem? Have you been harmed?
Sure, you've been harmed, because you have thirty people in a two-bedroom house. There's a safety issue. There's a health issue. There's a security issue.
But that, but that is their concern, not yours. If they're not harming you, that's, that's, that's their concern.
I strongly urge you to give some consideration to some sort of reasonable limitation number.
I guess we, we probably just can't ever agree on a reasonable number.
Well.
Because we're, we all have a different perspective.
No, no, no restriction is not reasonable. I say that to you. No restriction is by common sense not reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Scott, I've been in the real estate business about forty years, and I see vacation homes come across my desk regularly. And I see the various aspects of what's good and what's bad. There's a number of things that some of the homeowners who are turning them into VRBOs don't understand is how financing works. Some of them don't qualify for financing uncertain situations anymore. Some are limited, interest rates are a lot higher. So that's one consideration that few of them take into account. Secondly, property rights. Councilman Cousins, there's not one thing in your business that you do isn't regulated by the government. There's not one aspect that goes into a home that isn't regulated by a whole host of government When you talk about property rights, governments have rights. If they want to take your ground, they can take your ground for eminent domain. You don't have the right to not pay your taxes. So all of us have limited rights. If I wanted to have a pig farm next to your home in an R1 zone, you have ordinances that prohibit that. One of the things that I am concerned about is a safety issue. If you take a fifty-year-old home, make it into a VRBO, and go downstairs and there's three bedrooms, three bedrooms upstairs, the windows don't meet codes, you can't get in and out of it if there is a fire. Oftentimes with these homes, you have a outside basement entry, doesn't have rails, and the concrete is at ground level. You get a family there that is not used to living there, you're gonna have some kids running out there at night, and they're gonna go over the top in that. So I think these homes absolutely have to be inspected. You know, I think you've made some good strides on some of the requirements. I'm with Vern. You cannot not limit the number of people in that. I'll give you an example. I was in a business the other day that they're going to be putting a youth home in. And the value based on that facility is per bedrooms, just like in student housing, it's per bedroom. That gives you the value. When that individual found out that per bedroom has a greater value, he decided he was gonna put three people in a bedroom that was supposed to be for ten. You cannot control that. And the only way you can control that is by having a limit on the number of people per bedroom. Now, I understand.
But how are you gonna enforce that? There's no way to enforce that.
Look, there are a lot of rules that we can't enforce specifically, but you can ask that, and you can put it in your business license. Those people that are honest will live with it. Those people that are dishonest will not live with it. You really do, if you put that many people in a three-bedroom or four, six-bedroom home and not limit it, you're just asking for a lot of trouble. I would strongly recommend, and I, and I know you're pro-business, but there's also some things about zoning, and it almost seems like some of you councilmen would just as soon throw out all the zoning ordinances and do whatever you want. It's really disappointing. I happen to have worked, I was on, been involved in government and did rezoning and helped rezone a city. So I understand that. I am really concerned that you will not look at the health hazards and the problems with not limiting the number of individuals that go into that room. And secondly, no matter what, those need to be inspected for health and safety reasons. Thank you.
So I got a question for you real quick. So are, so you want everything inspected? So are police forces, they're, they're, they're just, you know, they're at their max with what they do? Are building departments at their max? What do you propose? Do you propose hiring more people to do that?
Look, I don't expect the police to do it, because they're not qualified to do it. They could do it if you gave them a whole host of list of you need to, but they're not qualified to do it. Your building inspectors are. Now, recognize that, yes, we're busy, and this time we have a lot of homes being built. St. George is the same way, others. Almost every community in Southern Utah that I've been in are dealing with this issue. Even, even Boulder, Utah saw the wisdom in requiring the home to be owner-occupied for a portion of the year. I, I think for an R1 zone, I think that's an absolute must, but I can see that you're not gonna do that. But yes, they may be taxed. Six months from now, we're not gonna have the same market. The predictions are that the housing market is going to slow down with interest rates rising. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But yes, those people can have, and it only takes fifteen to twenty minutes for them to get through that, and they could do it. So yes, I do. I think your building committee department could do it.
One point, though, I mean, we've been advised by our attorney that the homes can only, they can only be enforced for safety and the standards from the era that they were built in. We can't require someone to bring it up to current building codes. So even if they inspect it, there's really nothing that we can do with making them bring that up to code. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. I, I understand that, but you need to be aware of that if I put thirty people in a six-bedroom home that's a fifty-year-old home, there's safety issues in that. And that's another reason why I would like to see you limit the number of people in it, because I think that's really, really important. I really do. Thank you.
So I, I wanted to bring something up, and, and I just, so Mr. Vernon and, they're dear friends of mine, and, but I just want to bring something up. When we create ordinances that are too complicated and have all these little nuances that are very difficult to enforce, and I just want to go back to our dog ordinance. This is an issue we had. There was actually more people here for the dog and cats than there were for this. But, so for many years, Cedar City had a dog, a, a dog ordinance, where you had to have your dogs licensed, and you could only have two dogs. Okay? And, and, and the, the thing that brought this to light was a gentleman out in the valley who had hunting dogs, and he had two dogs. One was an old one, one was a, one was a young one. And he bought another dog. He knew the old one was gonna die soon, so he bought another one to train. Well, he was breaking the law. And those three dogs, he takes very good, probably as good a care of those animals as anybody I know. But they happened to find a way out, and they got out. And he found the dogs at the same time the animal control officer found them. And the animal control was, you know, they were black and white. This is law, you gotta get rid of one of your dogs. And that's what brought this whole thing to, to, to light. And as we looked at this, we weren't, as a city, enforcing the dog licensing requirement, and we weren't enforcing the, what we found was a, a lot of people in Cedar City had more than two dogs. And there was people on streets that had five dogs, like Mr. Vernon mentioned. You didn't even know they had five dogs in their house. And there's other people that had one dog, and it drove everybody crazy. So, so we, we really came to the conclusion in Cedar City that why try to regulate something we couldn't really do? And we actually got rid of that ordinance, because we never enforced it, and we weren't willing to enforce it.
So in your opinion, when anything that can't be reinforced, should we do away? And should we go through the laws and say, all right, what can't be enforced, let's just get rid of it? Would, would, you would go along with that?
No. I, I, I stayed in my position when I stand on this.
Okay. Well, my feeling is that it needs to be regulated, it needs to have a business license, it needs to be inspected, and there needs to be parking, adequate parking, and two per bedroom. And I think that can be enforced and should be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're gonna throw you out, because you already spoke.
Okay.
Thanks. Hey, I'm holding everyone else to it. I held everyone to the same standard.
Jeremiah Davis, I have just one quick question. And when it comes to complicated ordinances, owning a specialty shop, I know about complicated. And when it comes to complicated ordinances, owning a specialty shop, I know about complicated. But my question is, you guys were talking first about the priority mail or.
Certified.
Certified mail for the people within so many feet. Then the other thing was go talk to your neighbors within so many feet. What's the proof that they actually talked to those neighbors? And if they have a neighbor that doesn't like them having that, what's that neighbor to say, well, they never talked to me even if they did? That sounds like a thing there where we're getting back in the thing to where you're putting something in an ordinance that's just about impossible to prove one way or another.
They're certified in their application that they have completed it, so.
Yes, they, they can lie to us, certainly.
I just saying that just, it looks complicated to be able to enforce on.
But, but if we did certified mail and you live in an R-three zone, it could become very cost prohibitive to do certified mail to actually prove that you notified those neighbors.
Hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
True. I just saying that just sounded like, that just sounded like a complicated thing to be able to prove one way or another and.
That's why I said we needed to rewrite that, yeah.
We didn't hear about this or I own the house and they talked to my tenant, not to the owner. To me, that sounds like something that wouldn't even be worth putting in the law. You know, maybe recommend they talk to their neighbors, but proving that they actually did is next to impossible.
Well, that was one of the things that come out of all the committee meetings that they wanted to have notice that their neighbors were doing that, so.
Committees say one thing, but committees don't know much when it comes to enforcement. It's the problem you run into there.
The way it's written isn't that you just talk to your neighbor. It's either mailing it or hand-delivered letter. So there would need to be some sort of proof and document that you did that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Okay, just so everyone knows, and I do pause the timer every time the council starts to talk so that you guys get your time, but we are at almost twelve minutes, so.
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Allen and I'm here to address the council. I can't talk that fast and think that fast at the same time. On one hand, I hear that when there is an application made for a short-term B and B, R B, whatever, uh, that the requirement for a sprinkler system and whatever safety should be in the home will be on the application and in good faith. You, because you don't want to inspect it, it's not impossible, it's not possible to do that because of the cost. So in good faith, these applicants will sign this and be held responsible to it. On the other hand, uh, you are, you're resisting a limit on occupancy because you don't have a way of enforcing it. I don't understand your logic because if you have, if you have this limit, it's on the application. By good faith, people will adhere to it, just like you put good faith in people to have safety in their home for those people that will rent it.
Yeah, the unenforceability wasn't my main reason. I, I see that as being.
It was Mr. Cousins.
I see that as being, as being a problem. But the variety of homes that are out there, the property rights that, that others want to have to enjoy their own property rights too, that have pleaded to us to not mess with theirs. We've listened to everyone and trying to make it fair and equitable to the citizens of the community, not one group. And we have, we have done our best. We've worked very hard on this and, and I'm sorry, that's, that's where I feel.
Well, I, I understand your statement and how you would like to stick to this. In my opinion, you, both of you Cousins, Mr. Cousins and Mrs. Hartley are using your arguments for, because of personal reasons. Because of your experiences with your own families, which you have stated, and that is a personal preference. And I don't think that's representing the citizens of this city.
So should I tell you how many times I stay in a hotel also? I use hotels very often too. So now do I prefer the hotel?
You have a choice. It doesn't mean that all of our residents zoning has to be accommodating that choice, that you have the option of having more than ten people in a home. And that's my argument. Thank you.
Just for clarification, I've used an Airbnb twice and I've stayed in hotels hundreds of times.
Right.
Well, that is good, so, yeah, and I understand that too. But I don't think that other people have to make compromises and have their property values reduced and their lifestyle change just because it is a general, uh, yeah, acceptance that there is no limitation on my neighbor renting out for thirty, fifty people. Uh, I don't think that is fair. It is not right and you have, uh, property zones that, that are there to be enforced as well. And I don't think you give that any consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would be interested to know if.
Oh, you, no, I was just going to say you have like forty seconds left in your fifty-minute window.
Can I just say one thing?
If you state your name first.
Yes, I'm sorry, Sue Vernon.
Okay, and you have forty seconds left, so there we go.
That's all I need. Um, to say that, uh, all these things cannot be enforced, does that mean we shouldn't try? To throw everything out because it can't be completely enforced? I have a real problem with that.
I'll restate that. That was not my primary reason that I just said to Mrs. Allen. That was not my primary reason. My primary reason is the basis of personal property rights. And that's, I'm sorry, that's where I stand. I was elected to represent all the citizens of Cedar City. I do take offense that I'm accused of doing that for personal gain. It is not for personal gain. And it's not, you guys are jumping on this enforceability thing. That was not my primary reason.
Thank you.
So is there a way that we could maybe look? And I certainly don't want to get Councilwoman Hartley, she seems to be on the hot seat and my apologies for that too. But I, I want to make, I know, you're tough, you can take it. Uh, you're a banker, you can take it. I want to make sure that, is there any room, um, that we could even look at compromise? Because I do think there is issues here where if you're trying to put, you know, nine bunk beds in a large room, as I stated earlier, I think that is a problem. I get where there's a problem saying, how do you enforce that there's two, two people, two guests per bedroom as it stated? Um, but for me also, and I said this to Councilwoman Ison earlier, and we've discussed this here. It's about trust. A lot of this is about trust. Sometimes you go into a place, you go into a business, you see something on a wall that says, you're not allowed to do this, you're not do this, you know, don't pee in the pool, don't do this, don't do this. Okay, that doesn't mean some little kid doesn't pee in the pool, but the rules are there and you watch it and you try and trust that people will do the best thing that they can. So I guess my question is, is there a way that we can find a middle ground here, uh, Councilwoman, with what you're concerned about and then what I'm concerned about? And I don't know how the other council, well, I certainly know how Councilman Cousins.
I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, the only thing I come up with Scott through this while we were going back and forth. The application, and I, I'm referring this, it's similar to a regular rental application for multiple housing or whatever, when we take that and the application, we, they have to list the number of bedrooms so we can, we can figure out the parking for that particular building or whatever, you know, through the building department, how many parking stalls they got to have. Could we do that with this application possibly where we're requiring a, uh, diagram of the house and the number of bedrooms? Would you feel better about limiting it two per bedroom based on the application? You know, even plus two to allow for the, the babies or whatever you want to call them or the other kids at the application process, um, to identify it there. And here again, yes, it's going to catch the honest. People will get around it, people will lie. They do on the other applications as well, you know, so they don't have to put in as many parking spaces as we require. They do it all the time. Um, and that way it's, it's kind of an upfront thing and doesn't really have an upper cap. If you had a six-bedroom house and you had adequate parking, um, you could have twelve tenants.
But you're talking the two guests plus the two.
Right, so actually fourteen. But i- if they had that many bedrooms, yeah, right, right, on the bedroom that.
Well, I guess that was my question.
That's a thought I just.
That was my question, trying to find if there was a way to find some compromise or medium ground in here. That was what I was trying to figure out. So.
We do currently have a motion. So. Or.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to putting a limit in there, but it's not going to be ten. It would be more like two per bedroom plus four.
I'm okay with that. I can live with that. I think that's a compromise. I think that's something that we live with and we judge it and we see what happens.
That's kind of what I was suggesting, yeah.
Along the line you were talking about.
So, all right, I'll amend my motion to include, to remove the no occupancy and do two per bedroom plus four.
And then, oh, go ahead.
With no cap, is that correct?
Plus four, so the cap would be whatever the rooms plus that equals out. And then still parking based on what zone it's in. And requiring smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and the others recommended.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Do you have questions?
And then the council's also giving me the leeway just to reword that mail language so it makes a little more sense.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second based on two per bedroom plus four, parking per zone, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, monoxide detectors required? The parking or the mail part, like Tyler said? And then based on today's version, here we are.
Can you repeat that? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we will do a roll call vote on this, starting with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes four to one. Thank you all for your participation and for being here and expressing your concerns and the civil manner in which we have been able to work through this whole process. All right, item number thirteen, consider.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We're going to wait for just a second until it gets a tiny bit quieter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we need to, we're at item number thirteen.
Yeah, we're at item number thirteen. I was just going to wait till it gets tiny bit quieter so we can hear.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so item number thirteen is consider bid results for the fleet building project.
So staff's recommendation is reject the bids. Uh, we have some money in that budget. We don't have near enough to do the project with the bids we received. What we plan to do between now and whenever we can get Hunter around to do it is start the outside work, dirt work, putting in the storm drains and the asphalt around the apron of the building. And we'll try to see what Ryan can propose in his budget and see if we can go from there.
Could you just give us that last part again? Because I didn't hear that last part. You're going to try and do what?
Well, Ryan's going to make proposals when the budget comes around and we'll see what he proposes.
So it's something we'll look in the next year's budget.
I mean, those. Look, I don't know if it's there.
No, I understand.
And those bids were just out of sight.
Looking for other funding sources as well.
So do we make a motion or is it tabled or?
So the funds that we have, I hope we don't have to dip into those funds that are already budgeted to do the outside work. What we've talked about as staff is using our own crews and using existing budgets, stretching existing budgets to find a way to do the storm drain and the dirt, bringing in the dirt to bring it up to elevation and as much asphalt and concrete as we can. So do we need to make a motion to reject the bids?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now the next item is closed session for property negotiations. I need a.
I would move that we move into closed session.
Second.
All right, we'll start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
That's one that we ever get respect from you.
Very difficult issue.